We also have candidate information on a table, on a special table, so they can bring literature and so forth, and you're welcome to take some of that. This is for the primary election, which will be held August 21st. Polling places are open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. You can vote early by completing a ballot at the county clerk's office, or by requesting an absentee ballot through the clerk's office through August 21st. Election information can be obtained from the county clerk's website, or from the Wyoming Secretary of State's website. If you're not registered, or you want to change your voter information, you can do so at the county clerk's office through August 6th with a picture ID. You may also register or change your registration after August 1st through August 21st if you also cast an absentee ballot at the same time. And you can register or change your registration at your polling place on election day. If you have special needs, voting accommodations and aides are available at each polling place, and at the clerk's office, you can make arrangements in advance. They will assist you by even bringing the ballot to your car if necessary. In addition to voting for elected officials, during this primary election, a 1 percent specific tax is also on the ballot. You'll be voting for or against. We have a pro-con flyer about that tax. And over here on this table, the pink stuff, is sample ballots for the primary election, and we also have precinct maps posted.
Remind them to please don't take these with them.
Please do not take these with you, yes, as they are our only copies. There are many different ballots. As voting during the primary election, the candidates that you see on the ballot are based on your party affiliation and your residence. So Democrats see only Democrats, Republicans, similar unaffiliated voters, that is, nonpartisan voters, will see only nonpartisan offices listed and the ballot issued. The League of Women Voters and Laramie Daily Boomerang's voter guide will be published on August 5th in the Boomerang. It will also be posted on the League website, and copies will be available here at the library, county clerk's office, and other locations. At this time, we give an opportunity for other candidates who are not involved in the commissioner's race to stand up and very briefly introduce themselves, but they may not campaign at this event. So please, any of you who are there, raise your hand. Yes, go.
Tracy Fletcher, candidate for Albany County Treasurer. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Peggy Trent. I'm your current Albany County Attorney, and I'm running for a second term.
I think Grant Showaker.
Hi, Grant Showaker, county assessor, running again for another term.
And Erin O'Doherty, is that right?
Erin O'Doherty, I'm running for Ward 3, City Council.
Chris Mackey, City Council, Ward 3.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I'm Jessica Stalder, running for City Council in Ward.
Good, thank you. Okay, well, we will begin tonight's forum with questions for the candidates. Questions are to be written down and can be submitted at any time. We should have some paper or pencils. Just raise your hand if you need something, or if you have a question that's already written. And one of our League members will be around to help you. Questions should be directed toward all candidates in the race, not toward any particular candidate, of course. Each candidate will be given 90 seconds to respond to each question. We have a timekeeper who will signal the candidates by holding up signs. The sign indicates the time remaining when you are approaching your time limit, and at the completion of your time limit, you'll get the red sign, which says "Stop." The moderator is going to choose from the questions, may edit for clarity, may combine questions, and may ask further follow-up questions to help expand on an issue. The moderator may override the allowed response time if something requires that. The last 20 to 30 minutes of the forum will be given to informal conversation with audience members, so that you can talk to the candidates. Last, we would like to sincerely thank each candidate for entering the race. Now, I'll turn it over to our moderator, who is Mike Massey. Who has had a long career in education and public service in this state, including teaching and legislative service in both houses of the legislature, served as a special assistant to the president of the university, and also as a trustee. Mr. Massey.
Thanks, and most importantly, I was never convicted. Boy, what a great turnout tonight. I've done a few of these, and this is by far the biggest crowd we've ever had. You guys know how to pack them in. Nice work. We'll get started here. I don't think I've got any questions yet, but I came prepared with a couple. What I'll do is I'll start and pick somebody of the nine of you, are we two, four, yeah, of the nine of you, and then you'll get the first shot at it, and I'll start with Pete on the first question. But then after that, I'll start with somebody else. You'll get the first shot at the question, and then proceed to your left, and then after heber, we'll start back here with Pete and go around that way. Again, please share the microphone, and no filibustering. County commissioners aren't allowed to filibuster. So, oh my gosh, look at all these questions. Well, let me throw this one out to you, give me a chance to sort through these. So this will be the first question of the night, and that is, tell us why you are running or rerunning, and why do you think you have made or will make a good county commissioner? And Pete will start with you, 90 seconds.
Well, good evening, everybody. It sure is nice to see such a big packed house. I appreciate it. I'd like to thank Nancy Lockwood and the legal and the voters for the invite and for hosting this. This is a big thing. I've sat there where you sit, and it's really important to meet candidates in face by face. I'd like to thank Mike for being a moderator. I'd like to take the time to thank my fellow participants. I know how much you put on the line, and it's important that there are 11 of us. I think that that helps make wise choices. Most of all, I'd like to thank the public, right? You guys are here taking away a summer night that there are not that many in Laramie, Wyoming. And so, thank you. You're the lifeblood of democracy. So why do you run, and what do you think you bring? I'm a small business owner, not-for-profit executive, and for a long time, in the last few years, I've learned that collaboration, innovation, transparency, and empowering is the best way to make decisions. I think that those things allow you to use all the people of Albany County. I don't think just three people have it all known about any subject. So I would ask, and I would implore that, and send in systems that would ask all of you to participate in your government, I think it makes a difference. I just came from a not-for-profit small clinic that has three new programs, solar panels on the roof, and a garden with a mural being painted. And it didn't happen because of me. It happened because we have a team, and I think the team needs to be emphasized in the community, and the partnership between our partners in the community, between the city, the county, and all the other partners that are available. Thank you.
Well, I've always enjoyed the commission. I've served three different terms. I wanted to get back in it, and it's just, it's good. I've enjoyed all the people in the courthouse, got a real good crew, and it's fun to be able to serve the people and see all the things with planning and all of those things that are very important. Of course, budgets are important, we all know that, and it's a great thing to be able to serve, and I've enjoyed it a whole lot over the years. I've served state committees and everything, too, so that's the main thing. I just enjoy the service.
Good evening. My name's Thad Hoff, and I've been in Laramie, or I've been in Laramie longer. I've owned a business for the last 15 years. You may recognize me. I'm a locksmith here in town. I own and operate Wyoming State Safe and Lock. The cornerstone of that type of business is honesty and integrity, and I'd like to bring that to the courthouse and to the county government. Not that it's not already there, but a little more transparency, a little more public information at a faster pace, to keep the public involved with the process, and less, I say, backdoor operating, that kind of thing. Land deals, that kind of thing. I'd like to see the county a little bit farther out of the real estate business than they're currently in. But that's my general impression. I'd like to see the land and the water and everything for the next 50 to 100 years just clean and usable. I've got two little girls, and I'd like to see use the beautiful county. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Klaus Helsky. I've been a small business owner in Laramie for about 27 years now. My dad was a small business owner, and my wife's a small business owner. Miami, Albany County has been good to my family and myself, and I just thought it was time for me to try to give back. I'm probably the rookie on the table up here, the underdog candidate, but I figured it was time to get involved and try to do something good for the county. I again want to, oh, I'm sorry. Was everybody able to hear what I said? But I definitely want to try to give back to the county. I know how it is to run a budget. I run on a small operating expense with a small business. I know places in my business where I need to cut things, and I know places where I need to expand. And I'm hoping to bring that experience to the county, and I want to work with the city, and I want to work with, if I get elected, I want to work with Republicans, Democrats, I want to work with rural, and I want to work with city. So I hope I can get your consideration, and I hope my opinions are very strong. You'll probably find out very soon, so hopefully you'll agree with some of them. Thank you for showing up tonight. I appreciate it.
Figure this thing out before it's over.
I'm Clinton Swyzek. I have been a teacher in Albany County schools for 38 years. I just retired, just retired from teaching. I have lived here since 1978, when I come down to attend the University of Wyoming. I've taught many of you, and I really think I can bring a lot to being county commissioner. You, over many years, you see things that you always envisioned that you can improve on, and those are things that I see. And a lot of collaboration, as our candidates have already said. As a teacher, you do a lot of communicating, and you communicate with students, you communicate with parents, you communicate with the community in general. And it's something that I feel that is really my strength, to have people come up and talk to me. I know at the park yesterday, to be able to communicate, to see people that you have known for many years. And those are things that I feel that will strengthen me as the county commissioner, but also our county, to have people that, you know, you realize you can't do it alone, or you just can't do it as three, but you have a team, and you have a team of people that constantly, and will come and talk to you and give you input. Ultimately, it'll be our decision on many, on many issues, but to get input from the community, from your fellow commissioners, I think that's very important, and so, thank you for coming.
Hello, hello, hello? No fire here. Okay, my name's Tim Chesnut. I was born and raised in Laramie, Wyoming. I've been, attended the University of Wyoming, and it's great to see so many people out there that I know, friends, neighbors, university professors, high school, junior high teachers. And one of the things I really like to see is all the county employees out there, because it's great to see them involved in wanting to know who their next boss is going to be, because the decisions we make affect their daily lives, and they affect all of your daily lives as well, but on a much closer level does it affect the county employees. I'm excited to run again for county commissioner. I think there's a lot of things that I have done in my career that have been positive, but there's a lot of things I'd like to see in the future. Especially, the Pilot Hill land deal is close to my heart, and I think it's going to change the landscape of Laramie and make Laramie a better place for economic development and just for quality of life. I really look forward with all, working with all the people here, and being very accessible to the public. I get emails, phone calls every day, and I know I am very accessible, and I look forward to working with the other commissioners and all the county elected officials and city council for the next four years. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? Am I close enough?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Comfortably close to the microphone. My name is Laura Hanning. I live just outside of city limits in the county, off of Roger Canyon Road, and I'm running for county commissioner, because over the course of the, I guess, nearly nine years of living in Laramie, I've seen some persistent problems that despite everybody's best efforts to get them solved, there seem to be various obstacles preventing us from just thriving a little bit more. You know, I heard somebody call Laredis, well, not just Laredis, Shangri-La the other day, and I thought, it's true, we have a lot here, and I'm interested in trying to use my background and experience of 12 years in state government, although in a different state, a similarly situated state, in many, many ways. And my previous career, I was doing environmental work in protecting groundwater quality and surface water quality, and I feel it's a fundamental, important, vital aspect of keeping our county healthy and strong. And I, my, although I would like to work on many problems and feel I have a good temperament and judgment and skill set for tackling them, in a long history of working cooperatively with many, many entities, even hostile ones, I really feel that we need to figure out a collaborative strategy to get the water thing off of the table. We shouldn't be having to talk about it anymore. So I just would really like to focus on water in addition to some other things. Thank you.
I'm Tony Mendosa. I was born and raised here in Laramie. I come from a large family, so listening has always been really important. Collaboration and cooperation and bringing folks together of very different opinions and attitudes. I'm also a neophyte to the county commissioner race. I've always been interested in community service and community engagement, and so I'd like to have an opportunity to serve the county and the city residents on the county commission, and thank you.
Good evening. Are we turned on? Yeah, we are. I just got to turn up my Barry White voice. And to Mr. Swyzek's point, he taught me. I was his student. So the idea of serving with him, it would be really fun, and I probably am a better commissioner than I was a student, because nobody's a good student in ninth grade. Anyway, I've really enjoyed serving the last four years. I didn't really ever have an intention of getting into politics, but someone who thought I would be a good commissioner asked me to. And I went home and thought about it with my wife, same as this time, because we're busy, we have five kids, and we run a business. And we have some unfinished business, one of them being the land purchase. We've done some things that I think are really good inside the county government that the public has a hard time seeing, but it helps our people be happy and productive. And sometimes I think maybe people think that we're not open. One of the things that I'll say is when I ran the first time, I really wanted the public to be treated well in meetings that I attended, and I think that we do that. We give people lots of opportunities to speak on every issue, and the public gets to speak first. And I would like to continue to do that. There are just some things that I think we can keep doing and do well, and I appreciate all of you coming to hear us tonight.
Thank you. So far, we've got 25 questions, so we're good. What I'll do is I'll put the questions together, and so when, I'll ask the questions in which it looks like several people have that particular topic on their mind. So let's go with the next question, and we'll start with Klaus on this one, and here's the question. Do you support the acquisition of the Pilot Hill property? If not, why not? If so, how will it be paid for? And what source of money will be used to provide infrastructure and maintenance?
Well, that's a good question. I'm glad I got to go first on that. I'm definitely pro-Pilot Hill. I'm an environmentalist. I'm with Mara on that I want to protect the water. I do have a problem taxing any resident of Albany County to acquire the land. We need to try to figure out how to get state and federal money. I don't know if there's any way to twist the arm of the state legislature to get that rainy day fund opened up. I would dearly love to get that. I don't want any development on Pilot Hill as far as infrastructure going to it. I would, if Pilot Hill was to be acquired by Albany County, I would like to make it like a greenbelt where there's no motorized traffic. I would like to open it up to recreation and leave it as a natural wildlife habitat. I would definitely try to find sources, either federal or state again, and private donations to help acquire it. I think it is important to acquisition. But we live in one of the poorest counties in the state, and I just don't see putting any more burdens on the residents of Albany County at this time as appropriate. If there's any way we can do it without having to burden the residents, that would be the direction that I would favor. So, thank you for your time.
We're going to have fun, huh?
I could answer that question, but I'm going to let you go first.
I'm in favor of that also, of the Pilot Hill, and I am environmentalist also. I do live in the county, and I've lived in the county for 10 years. There's my name. And to protect the, to protect the environment, we live over at the Castro Aquifer, and I, anytime that you can improve the quality of our county for our people, I think that is a very important step for us. I agree with Klaus that we need to find areas where we can supplement the monies for that. We are not the richest county, but we are not the poorest county, but we need to be frugal with our money, and we need to make sure that we're benefiting, but that we are benefiting in a positive way, and we're doing things that we should do and do it the right way. And so, yes, I do think that this is a good thing for us. Thank you.
I guess it goes, goes without saying I'm for it, since we've been very involved in getting this whole thing set up. One of the things I think is frustrating as a county commissioner is people think that if you're representing the county, you're not representing the city. All of us are in the county, so we represent all of you. And I just want you, I want to emphasize that right at the beginning. This will benefit the entire county. Sure, it's right next to the city limits, and it will benefit the city residents greatly, but it will, through economic development and other things, it will help all the residents of Albany County to grow and to sustain the water and the quality of life that we've come to love. As far as the purchase of the land, if you pay attention to some of the media outlets, sometimes these things don't get out unless you're looking for them. But we put together a proposal for, to the State Line Investment Board recently, and they were positive in putting together a proposal to fund this land acquisition through land swap, private land for public land. So we believe, as we believe since the very beginning this is going to get done, but now it's looking like it is going to get done. As far as, that'll only be for the purchase of the land. We're going to have to raise money for the maintenance and opportunities, other opportunities on this land. So we are going to have to do private fundraising and other things. I stated when this originally came out, that no county funds would be used, general funds would be used for the purchase of this land, because there are no general fund monies for the purchase of this land. We have no money, people. We have to do it through private fundraising.
I'm very much in favor of the Pilot Hill parcel purchase. It seems to me like a transformational opportunity for the county and the city to have this direct corridor up to the forest lands, for people to not have to use cars, for, you know, just the possibilities of what we can do with tourism, I think, based around a trailhead in town, I think is tremendous. And in addition, we'd be protecting the aquifer and also the viewscape, if you think about that. If you don't want to see houses being built up the side of the valley, then this protects that additionally from buildings. Paying for it, additionally, it seems like what it would help solve in our, in our community is problems with our health, our mental health and our physical health. I think having access to exercise like that is bound to make some incremental improvement. Paying for it, it does sound like you hear different things in the news about, like I've heard the Elk Foundation also trying to work on this. It seems like there's a lot of things afoot in that. I'm hopeful it's going to work out. Paying for the maintenance, I'm wondering if we can do something similar to the Madison Bow Nordic Association, which is a very successful model for user-based funding of maintenance, and perhaps a little fee for out-of-state people who are parking a lot. Thank you.
Agree, please pay more.
Well, it sounds to me like the Pilot project is an opportunity for us to maintain public land for public use, and I'm always in favor of that. And the potential impact on the aquifer is another critical consideration. We don't want to become a situation like Pavilion and have something of that level of crisis on our hands. It sounds to me like it's going to be a funding opportunity for us. The maintenance part of it, I think we could do through some other kinds of fundraising opportunities, and certainly some fees for use of that, of that opportunity, that land there. So I'm very much in favor of that. Anything that's going to help expand the environmental and opportunities for the citizens of Albany County is something that I'm very much interested in and would be very committed to.
Clearly, I'm in favor of the land purchase, because, you know, I was, it was a unanimous vote on the commission to do it. What I'll say is that the land trade proposition looks promising. We don't know how much, how many parcels could be identified for trade, but it could substantially reduce the cash involved in the transaction. It's a really great thing for the city of Laramie and for Albany County as a whole, for education, for recreation. If you own an auto repair shop, a restaurant, anything that drives tourism, traffic into our, into our city and our county helps us. I will say that that area, in my opinion, needs to be preserved as it is, and there's an inherent public-private conflict that this resolves. There's a contingent of people who would like to regulate up there, but you can only do so much of that before you have to buy it. And I've always, as a steward of tax-
...purchase and that type of stuff, and acquisition has made all the difference in the world. So then how do you pay for it? This is where you have to have an open and transparent process, which quite honestly, you know, the land swap, it's hard to understand whether that's a good deal or a bad deal. It needs to be out there, right? So we have a game of fish, had an opportunity to raise money, right? They had lifetime benefits for game and fish packages many years ago. So offer that. Crowdsource this, the ideas, right? There are 40,000 people in Albany County who have an idea. I bet five or six have a really amazing idea on how to run it, on how to manage it, and how to keep it open and available. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. It solves a fundamental divide in the county and the city, and I think there's just no way not to do it. I've pledged my piece of the Pilot Hill, and I think the county commission has, and the commissioners have an obligation to get out in front. If you have to go door-to-door, you go door-to-door, right? It's that important. You don't get as many opportunities.
I can, I can support the concept of the Pilot Hill project. The problem that I have is exactly where we're at, where we pay for it. County commissioners cannot put those funds, that big a funds out. We can't even pay for our own employees. This follows a year where we lost a lot of good employees. And if SLIB Board would support it, and we could get financing through there, I don't know about the match money, how that would work. And we need to realize the costs of maintenance and all of the price pickup and all of that thing, and it will be a big factor, probably fencing. I don't know what it was, fencing. thing, it will be a big factor, probably fencing, I don't know what was fencing to be done on it. I don't know a whole lot about that, but the concept is good. It, it solves some of the problem with the water, the aquifer thing, because it's, hopefully that could quiet down, get those go through. But I, I really worry about the amount that, that the county itself might have to put into this project. Thank you.
Well, I think Jerry actually brought up a good point about the acquisition of this property and the ongoing maintenance. And the county's always had a problem with the ability to purchase capital, expend, or expend for capital purchases, buildings and maintenance over the long term. But the maintenance on those properties isn't necessarily always there. I'm very much in favor of maintaining what the county's already got, and I don't know that there's a plan in place right now to pay for the fencing, and there is a lot of fencing, that the county is saddled with the responsibility of providing and maintaining to the seller's satisfaction for the next 50 years. That's, the, the seller would like a buffer zone. I've heard Mr. Chestnut say that it's for economic development. The one thing that I hear the most as a business owner in the line of work that I'm in is we can't find good employees, or we can't find any employees. And what you're doing is you're locking up this land for development for the next 50 years. I would propose, if it's possible, to amend the contract so that there could be a stepped type of program where you could parcel off some of the acquired land to help pay for maintenance down the road. So, every five years, every 10 years, there's development down the road. And then you can have the developer come in and actually put in parks, put in infrastructure at a very metered rate.
Thank you. And here's the next question that's on several people's minds, they submitted it. And we'll start with Maura on this one, and then proceed to her left. How would you improve the communication and partnership between the county and city?
Well, I guess my viewpoint on the best communication is, is face-to-face communication and trying to meet, I guess, my experience in trying to solve actual problems for municipalities is that you pull together all the, the representatives of the various stakeholder parties and any experts that you need to pull in to help you arrive at some sound decisions. And you sit in a room and you argue and you debate and you make your position and you provide facts and you try to arrive at a, a sensible endpoint where people make compromises to get there. I mean, so I guess I, that's the way I function, that's the way I've functioned on, on a variety of different problems, from dealing with drought, bringing an end to new developments in some communities in New Mexico, moratoriums on new development. We responded by rapidly pulling together experts in wastewater who could craft together guidelines for the use of reclaimed wastewater on golf courses or toilet flushing or new development. It was an opportunity to actually sort of hatch a new economic market, if you will, because it, once we provided a framework for using this water, communities could lift their moratoriums and a new economic venue was sort of created. And so, that's just one example of how I tend to try to attack problems. Thanks.
Well, I think the best way to arrive at a solution is collaboration and conversation and bringing the stakeholders to the table. I know that, that we have a very unique experience in Albany County with a lot of independent thinkers, a lot of individuals who have notions and ideas, and all of those are valid opportunities for us to come together and to understand each other and to appreciate each other and arrive at a conclusion. And understanding that what we do as citizens and how we come together is for the sake of our fellow citizens and for the sake of Albany County. All of us, as Mr. Chestnut has suggested, all of us are in Albany County, whether we live in the city or in the county. And so, it's very important, I think, for us to come together and, and to sit down respectfully and listen to each other and, and try to resolve these different problems and different issues.
Each one of you is my constituent. The borders of my territory are the county borders, and I would guess that 90% of you live inside the city and only 10% in this room live outside the city. I think it's important to highlight some of the ways that the city and county get along really well. Law enforcement, fire, we have, we have sort of counterpart departments that work really well together, grants. Some of the, the conflicts that we have are inherent in the type of governments that we are. The city has home rule and they have a different style of governing and a different set of rules they have to govern under. And ours are set by state statute. We're boxed in. If we want to do certain things, we have to go ask the legislature for the, the right to do that. And it's, it can be hard for people to, to understand those differences, to see why, why we have some inherent conflicts. I enjoy working with the city when I can and, and when we do, and, and I think that the, the conflicts are to some degree inherent and also a little bit overblown too. The Pilot Hill land purchase is gonna go a long way to dealing with that, considering that the city's water, a good, good portion of it comes from right underneath that, and that will sort of heal with that. The other areas, I think, are, are totally workable and not terribly challenging.
It's a great question, and thank you for ever asked it. I think this is a ball of contention for many of us in the room. As I walked around the park yesterday, there were many people, why can't they just get along, right? Why can't the city council, why can't the county commission, why can't they just work together? And that's a great question, something I've asked myself for quite some time as a not-for-profit director. We don't have the luxury of going along. In fact, I think if you look at the successful companies in America today and throughout the world, they're more collaborative, they're more team-oriented, because you just can't compete with a top-down model, right? You can't have three people making better decisions than 40,000 people working on the same problem. And you start with partnerships and you start with relationships, right? If you need to talk to somebody, go to their office, right? Ask them where they're coming from. Put your stuff out on the table, be honest and straightforward. And I think you have to start that by having your meetings, right? Open and available. The meetings with the county commissioner during the day. How many of you could be at a meeting during the day? I cannot, right? I work during the day. If you go to the county commission website right now, you can see the 2015, 2016 budget. Too bad it's not 2015, 2016, right? You have to open it up, and this is something that can be done today, can be done right away, live streaming night meetings with input from public through social media and any way they can. That's what we should do, right? You engage people, ask them to be part of the solution. They will.
Over the years, there's been a lot of times when the city and the county really did get along together. What sparks it off, I think, is maybe misinterpretation between the two sides. They don't see eye to eye. It's been brought up, everybody in the county or in the city is part of the county, and the different viewpoints. There's, there are city things that, that have to be done, and sometimes they are not necessarily what the county needs to have done. And then one gets aggressive over the other and you have that problem. And how to cure that, it's a tough deal. The best thing to do is try and get along and, and talk together and, and have things to flow better. Thank you.
Let me first say that I think Tony hit on something very critical, that there needs to be collaboration and respect. I, I think you have to go to your constituents, which include the city, the city manager, the city council. But anybody in the room who wants a voice needs to have that voice. And Pete also made the comment that it needs to be face-to-face. Social media's great, but it's hard to weigh comments when you can't understand any more than the one sentence you get from an email or a text or something like that. So, if you can understand somebody's motives, you, you need to be able to engage the public on either a daily basis or at least have time set aside during the day, in the evenings for meetings, that kind of thing. I've never had a problem communicating with any city or county agency, and I deal with just about every one of them. In fact, I'm right now having a hard time getting work done sometimes, just engaging in conversation with folks. I, I would like to know what people are thinking, and I'd like to put that towards the county government and make it a better situation for everybody. Thank you.
Maybe I misunderstood the question. I think access for the people of Albany County and the citizens of Laramie, I think we have a lot of ability to do that already. I personally have written to our city councilors many times, I've called them on the phone. I don't feel access to them is a problem. Can't honestly say I've ever contacted a county commissioner before. So, I don't think there's a problem there. As far as, I thought the question was more about the governments of the city and the county actually interacting. And I, I do hear a lot of problems from a lot of my county customers telling me that, why can't the city and the county get along? Why does the city always have to try to ram-ron it down the county and why does the county have to be so stubborn? And there's a lot of personality conflicts, conflicts there. I don't know as far as making the city and the county work together better. Maybe we need every two months a work session where the city council and the county commissioners get together and we talk about what our priorities are, what we'd like to do for the betterment of both the city and the county. It shouldn't be that hard. We're not that far apart, the county commissioners and the city council where they meet. We should be able to come together and work for the better interests and not just our own personal interests. Looks like I'm gonna run out of time. I do have some other thoughts about the county commissioners talking to the rest of the state or the county. I know a lot of people in the northern part of the county feel left out. I have some plans on what we could do about that, and maybe that question will come up and I get to answer that. But I think we need to get all the stubborn people locked in a room and make them work it out every couple of months and do what's for everybody's best interest. Thank you.
Tim and Heber brought up very good points and that your county goes and your people in your county goes from line to line, and also that you're dealing with county and city and everybody is part of Albany County. And you can't be territorial, you have to get along. If elected, county commissioner will be my primary job, but I am also a city employee. I am a certified personal trainer at the rec center, Recreation Center, and so, you know, I see that it's very important for collaboration, and that has been said several times, and communication, and getting along, and having meetings, and talking, and being able to give sometimes, to be able to listen to people and to give and to take other people's ideas, and to realize that everybody has an opinion and maybe the next person has a better idea than you do that can help you in what your decisions are. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that the relationships with the city and county are as bad a lot of times people think. I think, I, well personally, I get along with all of the city council people. I'm friends with a lot of the city council people. Plus, I'm very engaged with all. I have lunch with the mayor once a month. Terry Jones has a breakfast meeting that she invites all the city council people and city people to every month. Sometimes people come, some they don't. So, there are efforts made all the time. Since I've been chair for two years, I have proposed quarterly meetings at least, which sometimes they happen, sometimes they don't. Not gonna say blame either side why those don't happen, but I'll just let you know, we have met several times recently on putting out a sixth penny tax, a specific purpose tax for the residents of the county to vote on. This is the third one I've been through. This wasn't the easiest one to go through, but we have to come together as a community to put this forward too. Otherwise, it doesn't happen. And that includes the town of Rock River too. So, we all have to work together or it doesn't work out. So, we, we talk all the time. I think sometimes some of the legislative things come down that, that pit us apart, and I'm almost done too, but I'll, I'll talk a little bit about House, House File 14, where it ended the extraterritorial area around the Donut area of the city. But that's been very contentious with people outside the city letting the city have say over the things that they do with their land and they have no vote for city council. That's where I think a lot of it comes, comes in. And then I'll, I'll finish it off with, I think a lot of the problems that people perceive happening with the city and the county are press-related. When, I worked for the Boomerang for 15 years, and when you, when you work for the press, one of the things you do is separate and divide. Get the controversy out there, that's what sells papers.
Okay, thank you. On to the next question, and we'll start with Heber on this one. What is the most urgent change needed for county operations or, or organization?
We need more money. And I'm a conservative Republican, you know, I'm not a government guy. When I ran the first time, I thought surely I'll find some waste and messes in county government, and it, there was a little bit of housekeeping, but we have an amazing group of department heads and elected officials who are really good stewards of the jobs that they do for the public. It's amazing. It truly is. And I, I felt corrected, you know, 'cause people sometimes approach a job with a certain amount of ideology or something, and I, and I learned. It, it's practical execution, really. It's a business that we run and we try to run efficiently, and we do. So, I really enjoy that, and the issue that we have is that the most valuable property in this county is government property. The, the university doesn't pay sales tax and they don't pay property tax. And I'm not picking on them, churches don't, the school district doesn't, but we have a somewhat anemic private economy, and that's where the, the wealth gets generated. So, economic development is really important to me and it's something that I've worked on since I got elected and I intend to keep doing that so that we can have some diversity here and a tax base that will support the, the things that we need to do. And it might be useful to point out that we are the poorest county, not in actual dollars, but in per capita we are. We spend the least per citizen of any county in the state of Wyoming.
So, I take a different tack to this approach. I, I think the most important resource that we have crosses our borders repeatedly, right? We lose our young innovative people way too often. And why, right? Because we don't invest in ourselves here. This is something that needs to be done. If you talk to bankers or, or development guys, they don't want to come into places where schools are falling down, where roads have potholes, right? That's not, they're, they're bringing in people with families. And so, I think you have an opportunity to invest with human resources, right? Those are the people that you need. You need to empower people in your organization. I have this opportunity to work with a great team at the, at the not-for-profit I work with. I got one vote, right? I'm the executive director and I have one vote and it's just as important as our part-time pharmacy tech, right? And because of that, she has made our pharmacy 5,200 prescriptions for $35,000 last year, right? I just got out of the way. I think the commission needs to start getting out of the way and quit micromanaging. Empower people, right? We have to not leave departments with one person, right? Through 19 years, we got people with 20 years of experience that are the only person. When they leave, what happens to that institutional knowledge, right? You have to set the county up to be part, that'll continue long after your absence. And so, you ask for good people's help, right? And then you say, how do I make you successful? That's my job as commissioner. What do you need to be successful? What do you need in five years to be successful? And then you help them get that. And so, I think there's a great opportunity in that.
I'll word that up for it to Jerry. Thanks.
Well, as Heber said, money is a big option. We worked for many years to get the Pete Lane project set up and going. It had failures every, almost weekly. There was something that went wrong somewhere, somebody was objecting, and that's a big piece of economic development for the county, and we need more of those kind of projects. Something clean, an industry that's clean, that we're not gonna pollute the county, the ground, the water or anything. We're not going to pollute the county, the ground, the water or anything else. And get a, oh, better employment situation so we can draw more people into the county. I know that's not a popular subject because Albany County wants to say Albany County. And as you've observed, Colorado's coming north, and it'll be here before you know it. And if we can get good projects that can help us out with the tax base and stuff like that, that's what we need. Thank you.
Well, I guess first and foremost, I see a lot of county employees in the audience here, and I'm wondering if they're here to see who would be a best fit for their next boss. And I think the county employees are probably the best asset they have. In the county, I mean, we've got property, we've got all these plans, but if you don't have people to execute it and actually do a job, then you don't have much of an organization at all. That being said, I don't think employees should be fearful for their jobs either. The firing that went on here well within the last term, I would say it was unacceptable, the method that it was done, that type of thing. As for what the change that's needed at the county most urgently, probably new commissioners.
I agree with Thad on that last point.
I'm sorry.
I was saying I agree with Thad on that last point. I think we need to go in some new directions. Glad Heber thinks the budget is in great shape. I'm not 100% convinced. Being a small business owner, if I don't get the money to buy a tool that I need for my shop, I don't buy it. I put it off until I have the money. You've got to live within your means, and you can't just keep increasing fees on the citizens. They're going to get to a point where they break, and they're going to move out. They're going to have less people. You're going to have to increase fees even more on them to pay for things. We need to figure out a way to get more income into this county. And we're not advertising the benefits of this county. We have a beautiful county. We've got great recreation. We should be promoting tourism. We should be promoting the outdoors. We'll do that, I believe, on social media. I need to get me some tech-savvy young kids to help me on that if I do get elected. But you go onto the web and you look up Albany County, you get Albany, New York. And it's great that we're named after Albany, New York. But we need to attract people up here. And millennials want to get away from the city. They want to live in the city, but they want to get away from the city for recreation. We need to tell people in Denver and Nebraska, start close and have some advertising campaign to get them up here to increase our revenue. And then once we increase our revenue, then we can start looking at other things to purchase. But if we don't have the money, whether it's in my business or it's in the county, you can't buy it. You can't go on, you've got to have the money to pay for it. Otherwise, you're just going to dig yourself a hole and you're going to be in trouble. Thank you.
I spoke to a county employee yesterday, and she said that she could not do what she does without her team and that her team is very important and that all of our employees are, they're part of our team, and they're important to us, and they're our resources. Money, you know, money's a big part of it, as Heber said. We have to make sure we're putting our, we're putting our money in the right spots. We have a lot of empty buildings in Laramie. We have a lot of empty buildings. And I don't think that we're going to necessarily do our county any good by bringing in businesses that may drive out smaller businesses that we have, smaller people that are trying to do a smaller business. If we get, if we get the businesses to come in that will add to our community, that will add to monies that we need, yeah, I think that's, I think that's a sound project. Thank you.
Yeah, it's been really tough in the last... I've been a county commissioner for a long time, and last year was the toughest time we ever went through. When you talk about economic development, what you can do as a county commissioner, you're pretty limited in what you can do to help recruit businesses and things like that. But you're also limited in how you can raise money and how you can spend money. It was mentioned that we fired a bunch of people last year. That wasn't the case. When you have decreasing spending, I'm sorry, funding streams from the federal government and the state government, you have nothing to do but cut government. So we had over 10% of our workforce last year. We had to cut 19% of our budget last year. And in county government, the only place you can cut is people. We lost a tremendous amount of wonderful people last year, none of which anyone wanted to work. But the people out there in the audience that work for the county can attest to this, just like the county commissioners can. The people that work there stepped up, and they're the best asset we do have. One of the frustrating things you get into when you get into this business is people not understanding what the job is. People that run for office will tell you, city council and county commission, I will not raise your taxes. That's right, because we cannot raise your taxes. That's not something we can do. When we're talking about, especially the Pilot Hill land purchase and how we're going to do that, we can't raise your taxes. If there is any tax money paid for this land purchase, it's going to come from the voters, and I don't want to do that. But if it does come, you will have to vote to tax yourself. We will not do that.
I'm really glad I had time to think about this one. Didn't get that pitch to me first because I had to actually sit, and I was struggling thinking about the most urgent thing because I think of a lot of parallel problems. And I guess the thing that really comes to the top for me is unfortunately, our status as a state for taking care of children's health care. What are we, 49th in the nation? Was a recent Boomerang article. And I feel like we have many problems, economic development, roads. But if we don't take care of our children and figure out how to get them better care, then your future is not going to be all that great, in my mind. And to me, that's going to take a full-throated lobbying effort to the legislature. If Governor Matt Mead couldn't even swing them around, it's going to take a full-throated statewide effort of pulling together all the nonprofits. And you call your legislature. You call your legislator, and you get everybody you know to call them, and you flood their lines. And I've seen that in New Mexico stop, a program I used to manage, monitoring 2000 had dairies. It was attempting to go into the Department of Ag, and all of the river runners, everybody, anybody knew around the state was calling their representative, and it made a difference. It completely died on the floor. And that's what we have to do to take care of our children. Thank you.
I heard someone say recently that Democrats, and I'm a Democrat, need to be audacious. And so I want to talk about the elephant in the room, and that is the University of Wyoming. And I think that we need to initiate an effort where we would go to them, not with our hat in our hand, but go to them and say, you're a member of this community. We appreciate the impact that you have on Albany County and on the state and on the city of Laramie, and we need your help. We need you to step up and give us some assistance with our monetary situation. Then we don't have to be faced with these critical decisions to lay people off and to get rid of experienced workers and always wondering about where, how are we going to pay for this? How are we going to keep our young people in the state of Wyoming? We have this tremendous mind drain, and everybody laments it, but it seems like no one is really trying to do much about it. I think we need to start taking some really hard looks at what would be some of the real practical solutions and difficult solutions. I'm not saying that the university's going to run to the table with emptying their pockets for us, but I think we need to invite them to a conversation. And we need to invite them to, an opportunity for them to contribute and step up and help the city of Laramie and Albany County to maintain itself.
Okay, thank you. We're about an hour into our forum. We have about another 30 minutes for questions, which means about two more questions, I think. Maybe we can squeeze three in. And then after that, as a reminder, for half an hour, the candidates will be available to talk one-on-one with everybody here in the audience. I see some folks out there with smiles. The person with the biggest smile is the county commissioner who isn't running. Okay, here's the next question. We'll start with Thad on this one. What's your position on the six-cent sales tax?
I hate to say it. Oh.
Unfortunately, the financial situation that we're in, I am in favor of the tax. There's no other way to do it. Tim's right. You have to tax yourself to generate any revenues. Otherwise, it comes down to property tax levies. It's a dry hole unless somebody strikes gold or oil in Albany County. There's, there's an issue. We're not pulling in mineral royalties. The state's not gifting money as very liberally as they used to be. It's just not there. It's got to come from within. We could do it through a lodging tax. If somebody can dream up a way to tax the Coloradans as they pass, that'd be great. Unfortunately, that's the reality of the situation. It's a poor county. It's a lot of space. Albany County's 4,500 square miles. Put it in perspective, more than three times the size of Rhode Island. The money's got to come from somewhere, unfortunately. Unless there's a geologist in the room that knows where to drill, then that's the lot in life that we're dealt. And that, as a county commissioner, you have to learn, that's the checkbook. There's a balance. You have to spend wisely and accordingly. Thanks. No, I will.
Well, I'd love to tell you that I'd like to repeal it, but we need the money. And if we do repeal the six-cent sales tax, which was always supposed to be temporary when it first came about, it looks more like it's permanent now. I don't see any way around it. We're going to have to keep it. People have gotten used to it, so it's not going to be any extra burden than it already is at this point in time. Definitely wouldn't be in favor of a seventh cent sales tax for anything. I wish there was ways that we could increase fees for snowmobile permits or whatever. Lodging tax, we're already pretty high. We've got a higher tax on that than any of the other businesses in town. So I don't know if that's a well that we can tap. Money's always going to be the dog and the devil in the room. It's, we don't have enough. We've got all these needs. And how do you figure out what need gets paid and what doesn't? That's always going to be a challenge, both for, excuse me, the county commissioners and the city council. And that's maybe why both organizations ought to get together every couple of months and lock themselves in a room and eat their heads against each other. So I have to support it at this point in time. Maybe we should put an amendment to it to just make it permanent so we can forget this silly vote every time it comes up and just get it over with. Wish I had something else to add to it, but that's pretty much it.
I would have to agree with it also. And as I've told you a couple of times, that you just have to make sure you put your monies in the right spot. And that once you get the money to, you know, and I say I have all this money, and now, you know, what are we going to do? You have to have it marked, and you have to know where it's going to go. Being in the school district for as long as I was that, and being involved and also seeing the process, that you would see where you need to disperse the money and where the need is the most. And so I'm in favor of that, but I'm in favor of it to put a smart financial. And you have to be smart while you're doing it. So yes, I do.
Thanks, Thad. I like Klaus's idea about locking us each in a room and locking the doors and fighting it out. But unfortunately, that violates Wyoming Record to meeting, open meetings law. So we can't do that, unfortunately.
I think we can livestream it.
Exactly. So maybe we can make money there.
There you go. Pay-per-view.
But we, so this is kind of a tricky, as city and county commissioner, I can't advocate for the tax, but I'll talk a little bit about what I think about the tax in general. This is the third tax I've been involved with. The first tax, Fred Homer was a wonderful man, who was the mayor of Laramie at the time. And he taught me and the other people, let's put a slate of projects together, put it to the ballot. If the people like them, they'll vote for them. If they don't, they won't. So that's what the direction is going into these taxes are. So as chairman this last time, I helped to lead the conversation to put these things together. And most of this is infrastructure, and that's what people of Albany County will support. And the first tax I was on passed by 64%. The next time we got together, it passed by 69%. The last time, right in 2008 during the recession, we put a slate of taxes together for the people of Albany County to vote for, and they voted 74% to tax themselves. The people of Albany County know that we have no money. We have no money for streets. You know what our streets are like. You know what our roads in the county are like. We have one, we can blade the roads once a year, twice a year, I'm sorry, in the county. That's what people care about. They care about how they get to their homes. They care about how they get their people safely to the doctor, to the hospital, wherever it is. So I support the tax, and I hope the people of Laramie will think we did a good job as the city council, the town of Rock River, putting together a tax that you can all support.
Thank you. I'm definitely in support of the six-penny, the specific purpose tax. Maybe this brochure is in the back of the room that the League of Women voters perhaps brought as well. It's a really fabulous brochure. It shows that we bring in around $65 million with this tax, and it goes not only to Rock River and Laramie, but to the county. And like Tim said, it seems to broadly address a lot of issues that funding can't otherwise fully address. And I just overheard somebody the other day talking to somebody else saying they wouldn't mind if their taxes went up a little bit more. I don't know how many people are in that camp. I doubt there's a way we can come up with voluntary additional tax levies. But you just wonder how many people out there might be open to any seventh cent tax. I don't know enough about that one to propose it. But I guess I would say, to take care of our county and invest in the future, we shouldn't take everything off the table.
Well, I agree. And speaking of taking things off the table and putting things on the table, collaboration again, you know, we need to invite all of our partners across the city and the county to come to the table and talk about how we can best resolve this situation and how we can best meet this. And understanding that Albany County really is one of the poorest counties in the state. We don't have any other resources to rely on than some of the other counties. So we really have to depend on the cooperation and collaboration of all of our neighbors, all of our partners in the city. And that includes, unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, the University of Wyoming. And maybe there's not a way that we can tax them, but let's talk about it. Let's see if there isn't something that we can do legislatively or arm-twisting, whatever, you know, that we can bring folks together to help this situation and to help us out with this.
I personally am in favor of the six-penny tax. The reason is, is because it's a consumption tax. And the top two industries in the state of Wyoming are extractive industries, oil, gas, and coal, and tourism. So there's a half a million people who live here, but there's millions and millions who come to the state of Wyoming. And they use our roads. They use our water systems. They use, you know, our infrastructure. And if we wanted to pay for infrastructure with property tax, then that would be us 39,000 Albany County citizens trying to do that by ourselves. And that's not possible. So we do pay sales tax, but when we, when everybody who visits Albany County pays sales tax and the sixpenny in that form, we get to have help paying for our infrastructure, and that's the way we've done it in the past. I don't want to see the sixpenny become permanent. And the reason is, there's a level of accountability to the city, the county, and the town council of Rock River when we come up with our slate of projects and put them in front of the voters. As a voter, I want to see our projects on the ballot so I can give an up or down vote on them. And if I didn't like the projects, I would vote against the tax. I like the projects.
Well, thank you. I like the six cents. I have a problem paying it. I think people from outside the county, outside the state, help us fund infrastructure. You look at not-for-profits with the six cent. We have 16 to 20 not-for-profits funded. That's hundreds of jobs in your local communities, right? It's a small investment. I think that's important. I think people don't realize what that goes to do and how, what kind of safety net that develops, right? That's food, shelter, that's healthcare, right? And that matters. It makes a difference. And it makes this place more livable. It allows places like Rock River Centennial to have that ability to have those things that maybe their population can't afford. And so I'm a big supporter of the six cent. I think it's a great investment. And, you know, I think we should. Heber, I really do believe that people should put those funding programs right alongside the six cents. And I think if you did, you'd probably get to 85, 90%, which people thought what they funded with their six cent is quite a bargain.
The way it's set up, I would like to see the county have had a little, a few more projects. Maybe they didn't have any projects. I think it could have been a little more for the county. The city got a lot of good projects. It's very important. It's very important. If we didn't have this six cent tax, it just wouldn't function at all. And you talk about the university. We get that six cents off of all of those students. Every time they turn around and they buy a candy bar, you've got part of that money. And that's important for the county.
Okay. Here's the next question and we'll start with Tim. What does constituent service mean to you?
I think, I think it means that we're accountable to all of you. And I think I said in my opening statement that I consider myself very accessible. My phone number is out there. It's in the paper every week. My email is out there. You can come to my front door if you want to and talk to me and people do. I think being a man of the people is what gets people in here. And I, I don't say, I can't say any of us that are up here are not going to be that. I think anyone that gets elected county commissioner is going to be here for their constituency. But I think it's, it's really important and, you know, I see Steve Robs sitting over there. He, he taught me government in college and I think that's something they teach you. And one of the things you learn in college is about, you know, what politicians are supposed to do. Are they supposed to be here for them or are they supposed to be here for you? And as far as I'm concerned, we're here for you. And that's what I'm here for and please, you know, if I do something good, you can pat me on the back, but you don't have to. But if I do something bad, kick me in the butt and I'll even get out of my chair so you can do it.
I can attest to the current county commissioners being very indulgent of public comment because they indulged me at length one day. And because I didn't quite have the procedure right, I spoke at the public period out of turn and they even gave me a turn when it, when it was the right turn. And I really appreciated their letting me have the floor like that. I thought they indulged me at great length, in fact. So I was raised in government under the sunshine law and I have, I, that's the way I think of everything. The sun sanitizes everything and that all of what we do should be transparent. I'm, I haven't had a chance to ask the county clerk what impediments there are to getting agendas organized and posted online in a more timely manner because I hear that's a complaint from people. So I don't understand the impediments. I'm sure, I would like to understand more from the clerk to understand what she's got on her plate that way. But I firmly believe in trying to get information out to people in advance. I think that we make ourselves better through adversarial moments. Sometimes we can be called to be our best people when, when the public comes before us and demands of us our rationale on decision-making. So I, I welcome all, all involvement from the public and would be a strong proponent of, of making that our normal way of doing business.
I recognize, I realize that the county commission meeting is in the morning on Tuesdays. Now, most of us, and I'm thinking most of you, I am included in that, I work in the morning. I work during the day. So if we're going to encourage constituent participation, then we're having our meetings at the wrong time. We're having our meetings that are not accessible to the public, even though they're open meetings and anyone can come. If you're working or you have a family or you have a business, unless you're independent in your business ownership or you can get away anytime you want, it's not, it's not an opportune time. It's not a convenient time. And constituents, I think, are seriously left out of the process if they can't attend the meeting or if they have to make some sort of special accommodation with their family or their workplace to get away to those meetings. So I think one of the first things we need to take a look at, that I would propose, is let's look at a late afternoon or early evening meeting when people are home, when people can come to a meeting and actually have some real citizen participation.
Constituent service to me means knowing what's happening in our community and being responsive to it. And, and I'm confident that I do that. And it's, it's everything. It's law enforcement, it's courts, it's, it's, it's how people are treated by the other elected officials' offices in the courthouse. It's county roads and bridges, the quality and safety of your passage when you're driving on them. There are some comments that I'm going to respond to that I hear from the panel. One of them is our meeting times. As, as a political subdivision of the state, our meeting times and days are set in statute. We don't get a choice. It's the difference between home rule and, you know, and being a political subdivision of the state. Every county commission meets on Tuesday mornings, the first and third Tuesdays, and we don't get a choice. And I don't, it hurts my business. It hurts me and my ability to run my business. I have to abandon it for a day, you know? And there's a lot of other meetings we go to and I, we, so I make effort and expense to make sure that, that I take care of that. But the, the point of it is, some of the things that people would take exception to, we sometimes don't have control over. That said, our process is very open. We entertain comments from the public early and often and we interact well by email.
Okay, I want to repeat. Thanks.
Constituent services is foundational to our democracy, right? And so you have to get people where they are and clear the roadblocks when you can. And so if, if it is statutorily, you know, designated it has to be in the morning, then I would think that our county commissioners would be leading the charge to change that statute, right? Because that's just not all right. There's a reason the school board meets at night, right? There's a reason the city council meets at night. And they're legitimate reasons. And so I would hope that our county commission and the commissioners have, have gone on record and said, "You know what? It's time to change it." We have six delegate legislative members in Albany County. I meet with every single one of them and say, "We need to change," right? Because we need to get people their openness and their ability to meet us and talk. And then I think you said, environment, right? You become welcoming and you say, "You know what? I want to hear from you." I think some people get in office, they fear the public, right? I welcome it. I think that this is an opportunity. You have 38,000 minds working on a solution, right? How, how, what kind of rich solutions say you would have if you engaged them? If you said, "Hey, talk to me on social media." Maybe it's not as good as, as meeting face-to-face that, but maybe that's where people can meet you. And so you meet them and you get rid of the roadblocks. And then you just invite them and say, "You know what? I'm going to come to your door." Not every four years, right? I'm not going to meet you at the park every four years. I'm going to meet you from now until the four years is up and then decide to run again or don't run again. It's not just this one time, "I need your vote" and then go away. I think you have to continue to meet people where they are and welcome their input. Thank you.
Well, you know, the commissioners listen to people. If people talk to us, they don't have to come to a public meeting necessarily to put their views across. A phone call will work. In person. When I was on the commission, I always tried to stay in the courthouse most of the day just, just for that reason. You got the feel of the people that were coming and going. If you have a doctor's appointment, you don't tell the doctor that you're going to not come until five o'clock at night. It takes time. And it's the same thing with the county commission. If it's important to you, then it's important to get that word to the commissioners and hopefully they're going to listen to what you, what you have to say. And it might be filtered a little bit, but it'll, you know, it doesn't make any difference whether you're Republican, Democrat or whatever. Once you're elected to office, you serve the people, not, not your party. Thank you.
Well, my idea would be to listen and understand. Everybody's going to have a little different take on what the county commissioner or the county needs, but it would be our job to take that information and actually understand it and process it. You are electing an official to make the best possible call with the best judgment for you. You need somebody honest doing that, who's not in it for any other reason other than your public interest. So if you can't keep track of every decision that every commissioner's making, you need somebody in that seat who's honest and representing you and willing to listen to you, 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 and make the best possible decision for yourself, the commission and the county. It's on you.
Thank you. We're almost done. Now we get it. Well, to me, it is giving back to the community that you live in. And I can't remember who it was, Eber or somebody, that said that state statute says you can't change the times that the meetings are at. And three people in the county commission, commission here in Albany County is not going to be able to do that. It's going to have to be all 23 counties and it's going to have to be done by the state legislature, I'm guessing. But the one thing I'm guessing the state legislature can't stop me from doing is talking to private citizens, either in the city or in the county. And one of the questions earlier, I referenced that there was a point I'd like to make. I think sometimes we just get focused on southeast or the southern part of Albany County and we forget that there's other parts of Albany County. I'd like to have listening sessions where I go to other parts of the county where it's difficult for people to come to Albany or to come to Laramie and listen to us or give us their opinions. I'd like to maybe every quarter, go to a different part of the county and just have it, you know, put out there that I'm there, I'm to listen. I'm not to ramrod my agenda down. I want to hear what they're concerned about and I want to bring it back to me to Albany County and see if I can work on it. If I survive and make it through the primary, I've already got a meeting set up with one of the business owners up in Woods Landing to have that exact thing, a listening session, where the people that live in the county out around Woods Landing come and talk to me. Now, a lot of them come and talk to me already because they're my customers and so I get a hear from them every day. So they know where to find me, so I'm accessible. Tuesday is stressful. I will have to be gone. My employees will have to be there without me, but they'll manage. We'll get it done one way or another. That's a sacrifice I had to look at when I decided to do this and it's a loying sacrifice that I'm willing to make. So thank you.
Hey, there's a couple of things. First of all, I just don't think that the residents realize that you're the bosses. You're the ones that, that run things. You're the ones that determine what we do. And I think oftentimes when you come and talk to a city official or a county official or that sometimes you might feel like you're putting them out or that you're bothering them or, and that's not the case. We, we need to hear from you. We want to hear from you. We, we rely on that. And the second thing is, as far as I go and as far as I'm elected to a county commission, that the four or five or six months that you campaign, I have set the standards and reputation as far as myself for the many years that I've been here. And the things that I'm going to tell you tonight give you more information on me and I appreciate being able to be here. But in conjunction with that on who I am, I'm hoping that, that gives a, that gives a good reality of what I can do, but to realize that we have to work together and I will rely greatly on you.
Okay, thank you. I think that will be the last posed question for tonight. By the way, here are some of the topics that we didn't really have a chance to get to. Like I said, I focused on those questions in which several people or at least more than one person had submitted. But here are some of the other topics. And again, here for the last 30 minutes, we'll be talking one-on-one with everybody here in the audience. But there were also questions with regard to the hospital, renewable energy, employees, although you did touch upon that with, with one of the questions. Planning conflicts of interest, attendance, recordings of the meetings, various departments that donate, eminent domain. And I'm not quite sure about this last one, but something to do with migration from the front range. But nobody asked about the library. Where are we meeting at? At the library. So Rachel, I hope we had full price for tonight. Thank you. It was so encouraging to be here. It was a pleasure to be a moderator and listen to all of the answers and all of the comments and perceptions that you provided tonight. We have a very strong group of candidates for the, for the county commission seats. And I believe that it's whittled down to four, right? With the primary. So you're going to have some very difficult decisions and I hope tonight will help you with those decisions. And now for the final word before we go into just the mingling around, where we go back to the legal headquarters.
Thanks very much. Thanks very much, Mr. Massey. I'd like to thank the candidates for standing for office and also the public for attending this forum and becoming informed before you make your vote. Our next candidate forum is next week on Thursday. We also, we have them on the next Thursday nights. See schedules on the back table there. We also have a candidate forum in Rock River this summer, all for the primary election. Please mingle around and speak to the candidates as you wish. We will be putting away the chairs. We have to do that, but don't let that discourage you from staying and talking. Thank you very much.